Alrighty, good morning Commissioners and over to you Chair.
Good morning everyone and welcome to the Board of Commissioners Work Session for this day, Election Day, Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. We are a full complement of Board of Commissioners and Clean Water Services Directors. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by Vice Chair, Commissioner Pam Treese, Commissioner Jerry Willie, Commissioner Nafisa Bye and Commissioner Jason Snyder. Ta-da, I got it right for a change. We have very varied agendas for both meetings, our work session day and our business meeting. Our first topic for today is formal agenda item discussion. This is to make sure we are all set with today's formal agenda. We do need to make sure that we complete item four, Review of Emergency Declarations as they are each on the action agenda. We also have another big item on the action agenda for Clean Water Services and that is adopting the West Basin Master Plan. I assume, well, I know there is a presentation in the packet, but your team is all set on that. Mr. Shanley, great, because that's very, very exciting. A lot of work has gone into that. Prior to that, we have two public hearings. One, you may be wondering, why is this back before us, the very first item on the county supplemental budget? And that is because I made a mistake in the prior business meeting and neglected to hold the public hearing. So, my bad. So, we're fixing that today. Would the CFO still like to give a very brief overview or just mention that he did it last week?
I think we can just point to the record that we did it last week just due to the amount of items.
Last year's meeting, I guess it wasn't last, I can't remember what, the two weeks ago.
It feels like yesterday, so we can just point to that presentation.
Yep, okay. And then we have eight items on today's consent agenda. Commissioners, other than the emergency orders, are we all set?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, we're gonna fly through topic two and then get to topic four. So, why don't we do topic two first? Welcome up, Mr. Steyer. We have a few committees to talk about.
As our CFO gets settled, I just want to commend our CFO for working on getting our committees filled earlier in the process. That has been one of the goals that Mr. Steyer has had and just want to once again just commend the stellar work that he's doing.
Thank you for that. I was trying to get these committees pointed earlier last month, so we're a bit behind in getting these to the board for review. So, as we have the round, as we have the roundtables come up, I wanted to bring them on and make sure that everyone's along with us. So, I did find some errors on my slides and so I'll talk about those as well. I go to the next slide, I guess it's me.
Your predecessors didn't get here until like February or March, so I think you've exceeded.
Very good, very good. I like that.
Setting a new bar for yourself.
Okay, we just have to get them all filled. So, the bigger committee, I guess the big Works General Fund is our Washington County and Services Relating Number One Budget Committee. We have two vacancies there with Karen Bowden, who was sort of into her term, and Joe Everton with their term. And we have four candidates. Karen is one and Karen is in our chair last bunch of cycle and did very well and recommend that she continues that and she wants to continue that. So, I've recommended to reappoint Karen to the committee. And we also have Ryan Tackelson, who had applied earlier for the last cycle and didn't make this election. And so, he's a resident of Washington County District Four, had a Masters of Public Administration from Penn State. He worked at the Port of Portland as a Principal Budget Analyst. He was also recently appointed to the Audit Committee. So, I think both of those serve well to provide some insights into our budget. Two not selected, one was Catherine Ngang and interviewed her, Fernando Lira, who is on a number of committees in our county and.
But he's also a frequent no-show.
Oh, okay. Well, he had talked, he said, "I'm overcommitted" and so I'll decline to interview this time around. But, so those are the selections for the Washington County Committee?
I would say I am really pleased to see Karen, Karen interested in continuing service. I'm also sad to lose Joe Everton. He was a contributor. He, he was always prepared for meetings, contributed to meetings, served as Chair, I believe, for at least one year, maybe two. So, I am sad to lose him, but great roster.
For the Hampshire Patrol District and Urban Road Maintenance District, here's my error on the slide and my account number. We have two vacancies here, three. Put the packet together, I postponed some things. So, we currently have Scott Harnraff, Bob Zarkowski and Anthony Mills are all current members, and Dick Steinbergie and Brenda Papal are the two who ended their term last time. We have one candidate, Spencer Hatch. He's a resident of Washington County District Two, has a Bachelor of Arts in Mathematics from University of California, and he's experienced in the commercial real estate market. And has five years he's been following our county's growth, also experienced as a credit analyst, and pretty much interested in supporting the, all of the ESPD and the Sheriff's Office as well. So, I think a big good add to the committee.
So, will that leave you, you had two vacancies, so that will leave one, one position?
Yes. I'll work with the Sheriff, find, and also our LUT, another member. And then the last committee, North Bethany, so this is the one where there are three vacancies listed here. There are vacancies for Mahesh Data and Bruce Young, and Bruce has reapplied to continue his service and we appreciate very much. He's a very good contributor to the group as well. So, that will leave us with two vacancies.
And Mr. Udatcha is another one whose attendance was quite spotty.
Right, right. I know she had, she was out of country last year for something, so, yeah. That concludes my review of the applicants, and we're looking for a couple more, and I'll bring these in the consent agenda for approval in a future meeting.
I just, I just wanted to make a statement that Fernando, Fernando Lira has been a very consistent participant. Just wanted to look at that.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? All set for seeing this come forward in the future? Terrific.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, good job, Mr. Steyer. Onward we go. This brings us now to the emergency declarations. Over to you, County Council.
Good morning, Chair. Commissioners, as you'll recall, last Thursday's roundtable, your Board corrected county staff, County Council to draft two emergency declarations, one in regard to immigration enforcement in Washington County, and one in regard to the situation involving SNAP benefits and the current government shutdown. Post that meeting, County Council worked with Ms. Angie's staff to direct, to draft two initial versions of those emergency declarations. And then based on your Board's guidance met with Commissioners Willie and Snyder on Friday, who reviewed the drafts, made changes, and those changed versions were sent to your Board Friday evening for your review. So, we are now before you today, prior to our business meeting, to determine if your Board has concerns or sees critical changes that need to be made in those documents before we go into today's business meeting. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair.
So, Board Members, how would you like to go through these? We have two different action items, so I think one I have from the packet, the SNAP one first, in my printed materials, followed by the immigration one. Any questions or comments on the SNAP one? We have heard in the national news that the federal government will be providing some SNAP resources, but it seems the highest estimate I've heard from different news sources as well as from congressional offices is just 50% of the normal distribution, and there's been a lot of doubt sown as to how that distribution of funding will go through the state. So, my fingers are crossed. So, I think the, myself as one of five, this allocation of funding does ensure that we are able to help in the effort to ensure that family members here in Washington County are able to receive closer to their SNAP benefit as possible. I'm not hearing anybody say anything else, so.
Commissioner Willie and I both got to help edit the content here and graph them away. So, I'm not gonna probably have a ton to say, but.
I, I just want to express my appreciation to both of you and to General Counsel for doing this, doing this work. And the SNAP benefit resolution, I, I support. And I, my only caveat would be that it go to Washington County and make sure that we, you know, through the food bank or whatever distribution source, that it goes to the residents here in Washington. Yes, as, as embodied in the actual resolved and ordered. Yeah, I'm just underlining. Yeah, that's great. Yes, quickly.
I'll add my two cents and say that I've been hearing a lot of the impact in terms of the food desert that's happening and the impact it's having in our community is pretty drastic. So, I look to you, Tanya, to say the 250 is the absolute amount that we could do by worry that, while it's something in my, too small for our county. And I also heard from the community-based organizations, more specifically, like what would have the most impact on where to direct this money. And what I've heard with Maria, in conversation with Maria Rubio, as well as others, was you, in terms of Washington County, you get your big bank. You maximize the amount of dollars if you funnel that money to the Oregon Food Bank. And I think of the example that was given was every $7 you invest into Oregon Food Bank to Washington County, it translates into a lot, at least a $250 return on investment. So, I think it's a good, but the amount is what, what keeps me to say, it's better than nothing, for sure. And I know the reality and people are very tuned into the financial reality that Washington County is facing. But this is a crisis and people are really looking for government to be there when they most need it. And this is the time that I'm hearing people need. So, I think if there is a way to up that amount to at least $500,000 or anywhere, somewhere, but obviously you're the budget officer and it's easy for me to throw a number out there, but you do the, the nitty-gritty of balancing all the budgets, so.
So, I think there were some comments and questions in there. So, I think I'll try to leaf through that. So, these dollars, the intention is that we would funnel the dollars through the Oregon Food Bank and direct the Oregon Food Bank to direct the dollars directly to Washington County. Part of that reason is because if you're declaring an emergency, it is important to look at what's the most expedient way to distribute. So, that would be the method. As I stated during your Board's Roundtable last week, this by no means addresses food insecurity within Washington County. I just, I want to repeat this. This dollar amount does not address food insecurity within Washington County. There was food insecurity prior to the SNAP disruption as well. So, I also want to acknowledge that. I would highly suggest to your Board, you always have the authority under your policy governance. While I'm the budget officer, I present a budget to you. That budget is yours to adopt. So, you have the authority to direct me to dedicate more funds to one area or another. So, I want to, from a process standpoint, just make sure that's clear. I would strongly suggest that your Board pause on additional funding beyond the 250 until you see this fiscal forecast. I have said many times that we, we don't have a sustainable budget, and you will see that this Thursday in the fiscal forecast and the cuts that we will be approaching this, this year, which will mean that we have to cut services, eliminate services, enforce services back to the state. In my conversations, I will name the DA and the Sheriff. They are already extremely concerned going into this budget cycle. I see day in and day out, our staff strained, and I appreciate, and I also hear, I was at the community meeting last night. I know community is hurting too. So, I would encourage your Board to wait. If you want to authorize additional funds in the future, that is your, yep, yep. And these funds take us below reserve targets. And so, this coming budget cycle, and on Thursday, you will see in this fiscal forecast, the reinstatement of these reserves in the amount of 450, which means that's additional cuts that we will have to take out of the general fund. Did I answer your questions through that? Yeah, okay.
So, I need to come back to a finer point. The whereas's do encapsulate, provide recognition to the Oregon Food Bank, but nowhere in the resolved and orders does it say that the method of distribution will be through the Oregon Food Bank. So, I think that if we're going to say that generally as an intent, then we need to say that in the resolved and order.
We can certainly do that, but given that we're doing this very quickly, I would recommend your Board give Ms. Angie as much flexibility as possible should there be some issue encountered in trying to get that money to the Oregon Food Bank in the future. That way, you don't have to go back and readdress the tax of the resolution and order. You've given Ms. Angie, I think, pretty specific guidance that the expectation is this goes to the Oregon Food Bank, and I expect that she would operate within that guidance?
Well, for example, would be just as happy if the state office that manages the SNAP program would say, "Hey, if you have 250 that as this says you want to direct towards filling a gap with SNAP, we can accomplish that for you through the SNAP process." That works as equally well for me. So, I just wanted to make sure that everyone is clear on this talks about, we're trying to address the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, so.
Commissioner Willie and I considered this with the, with County Council about making it more, like the direction more specific. And for the reasons that County Council just described, we felt like it made the most sense to leave discretion so that we had speed and flexibility.
Yeah, and I think part of the.
I'm glad to hear it said.
Part of the focus that I think we were talking about is that this is certainly an evolving situation, and we want to, we wanted to give Tanya as much latitude as possible. If it's the food bank, then it's the food bank, but if there is something else that comes up in the near future, that we have the flexibility to meet that as well. And so, I'm, I'm very comfortable with not only the amount, but certainly the verbiage and the direction that we're giving Tanya to have.
I want to clarify one thing. You know, you made a statement, and I think I understand what you were meaning, that this is not gonna address food insecurity, like eliminate it, but that doesn't mean it's not gonna help on some level.
100%.
Okay, I just want to be clear about that for our community, because there is a reason to do this. Okay.
Are we, are we done with this one?
Yes.
So, but I have a question. Upon the dais, I'm assuming that the two of you are going to present this action item, or do you want County Council to present this? How have you thought that through?
I think I'd be comfortable with, with you, Jason, doing that.
How ironic.
No, but the reason why was because you have verbalized this much better than I have in our meeting on Friday. And I think you have a better strength in communicating that. Now, if that makes you nervous, then we'll kick it to Alex.
Be happy to do it.
Thank you very much. Onward to.
I think it should come from one of us, anyway, not Alex. Thank you.
And you're gonna second it, right? Absolutely. There you go. Thank you to the two of you for taking us on from our discussion on Thursday. I do appreciate it. Onward to, in the matter of declaring a state of emergency regarding federal immigration enforcement, which of the three of you are going to give us an overview on this item?
Well, I have a couple of questions. I delivered last night at Cornelius, I attended Rick and Clean Water Services, but I also gave the, my usual quarterly update on what we're doing. And I talked about these right up front because there was two of their public testimony folks that were very focused about ICE. And there had been activity at the Catholic Church that previous Sunday at three of their services, I believe, at seven o'clock in the morning starting. And so, they were very focused on this. So, I brought this up as the first topic that I discussed about. I got questions from one of the city councilors on what exactly does this do? Does it allow our sheriff to intervene to, to stop ICE from doing things? And I said, "No, it doesn't." I tried to explain it as generally as I possibly could, but then, you know, she got very specific and I said, "You need to talk to the sheriff because that's out of my lane." But, so, for this morning, I believe it will be important that that's the communication, what this is intended to do and what, if possible, what it is intended not to do. We're gonna be able to communicate that message, sir.
Well, I, hang on, before putting him in the hot seat, this is a emergency order that he's put together based upon our request and direction.
Yep, right.
So, towards your question, yes, but I'm, I'm comfortable in looking to our County Council with regard to the, how this goes together in terms of its form. But for the question of intent of this, that's on us, not on either our County Council or our county administrator. So, I'm doing what as Chair and Presiding Officer I need to do, and that is remind us of our job. So, to the question of this specific proposal as worked out, please answer that question.
Well, I think you already answered it in the way that I would have answered it, which is, this is policy direction from your Board. It's your policy. So, you know, I would defer to you as to whether that question is gonna be answered this morning. Again, we've discussed the words that are written here. I've, you know, looked at this from a legal perspective to ensure that we're well within our authority under both Oregon revised statutes, our charter and our ordinances. But as to the policy that your Board's policy sets, now, what we have written, to be clear, in the operative part, County Administrator's delegated authority of authorized expenditures under this emergency declaration in an amount of up to $200,000 to support immigrants and refugees in Washington County. I think that's the probably operative statement of all of the resolved and orders. I guess my question that I'm gonna, you know, reflect back to your Board is, does that meet the Board's policy directions? Is there further policy direction that needs to go to Ms. Angie and the expenditure of those buttons, assuming your Board adopts that? Well, that answer was just asked of what does this, that is what this does.
Well, so.
But we also need to communicate what it does not do.
There's a lot of things it doesn't do.
Yep.
Well, and that's overall why, why I will not be voting for this. It goes back to the conversation on Thursday. I thought what the discussion was, was providing resources for immigrant and refugee groups to help with, you know, the example was in terms of immigration processing, that whole legal processing. And there were a couple of examples provided in the conversation. So, this just talks about $200,000 to support immigrants and refugees. However, and that's, that's just quite open-ended. But I, we also talked about various expectations in our community on Thursday, and I've continued to reflect on that, recognizing that, well, and I'll take it even further, does this ask the sheriff to intervene on ICE? No. And in fact, that would be unlawful.
And to your, to your point, Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, but we have in the resolved and order, your Board, if adopted, recognizes that these are necessary to protect public property, public and property consistent with local, state.
And federal laws. But that's the lay of the land. Anyway, we, we can't direct any public funds to go without being consistent with local, state and federal law. So, that's why, have we changed anything? No. But we haven't, for example, and, and maybe I don't comprehend the whereas's in this one as clearly as I do in the other one, right? In the SNAP one, we talk about the Oregon Food Bank. I don't, we talk about the level of immigrants in our community and the whereas's, but not how that funding might be applied. So, what I'm most concerned about as one of five is that people will think that, wait, let me start from a point of, might this investment help? Yes. That is not, that is obvious to me. Okay. But I don't want people to think that this has directed our staff as managed by our two directs or our fellow elected officials to break the law. That's not what we're doing. We can't do that.
I don't think that's articulated. Other than someone's sort of interpretation of what's not written here, I don't know how you read this and come to a conclusion that that's what's being directed. Now, community expectations may differ.
Well, that's where we may have to have a media release or a statement that goes along with our point of intent on this item, right? And if that is something we're willing to direct, then I can support this as written. this as written.
That'd be great because I, I think it's important to have your support.
And last night at the community meeting, DA Barton, in my opinion, did a good job of outlining what state law, local law is in relationship to federal law. And the, he gave an example, incident in Marion County and was illustrating the fact that federal law supersedes state and local laws. And, you know, to, to that point, I think by having federal laws in here, we ensure that we're not opening ourselves up to that discussion. I do support the further explanation in a media release that goes along with this.
And Phillips indicated he can help put that together.
But I think there's an opportunity and hopefully we have enough time to discuss this. What I also heard at the community meeting yesterday is there's a significant impact from the ICE rates that are happening in Washington County, meaning two folds, residents are impacted and then businesses are impacted as well. So how do we, how do we take this emergency declaration and address that? How do we, how do we add tea to it? Yes, I agree with the chair that these money will help whoever gets them. But I think there's an opportunity to do more here where we can say what can we do with rent assistance for businesses and residential? And in terms of the sheriff, yes, I, I agree, the, you know, the supremacy clause applies here. But I think there's an opportunity to also empower our law enforcement as the Washington County who are in charge of all the budget related to personnels to say perhaps there's an opportunity for the law enforcement to track these activities. Because right now they don't get involved and they shouldn't get involved and they can't get involved, but there is a, an opportunity to say you will document. Because I, I don't know who's documenting. People are calling 911, but then what? Because they can't get involved, but we can ask, I, I, and I think other jurisdictions are doing this where law enforcement, they're not intervening, they're not assisting, but they're documenting, just like if there's a traffic accident that happens, a police will take a report. So how do we get to that in here? Is there an opportunity? And then also the rent assistance, I think there's a way to declare an opportunity to say, you know, there will be no evictions or any, like, I don't, I'm just, I'm processing with my four colleagues here as well as the rest of the people who are tuning in as well as you and Tanya and Alex to say, what are the best practices out there? People are doing other jurisdictions to add on to this because people are really looking to us to save them here. I, I, I look to you, Rick, to say, there are other cities that are doing, you know, no shut offs. Pausing shut offs during, we have to create this as the crisis that it is because people are really impacting. And I know many of us are operating from a place of comfort, but people are uncomfortable. So how do we join them in that journey to say, what can, what else can we do without without straining the county?
So, so within our board conversation about this, I'll bring us back to what was highlighted from the previous item. Each of these proposals puts redirects reserve dollars into action, reducing our ability for operations within our own administrative financial policy. So we don't have just unending dollars to put to action for the various needs that you articulated. So that is part of the overall context. You know, people are looking to us to save them. That is not what we're going to be able to achieve. Okay, we are, we here as a county government are not able to protect people from actions from any other level of government. That's just the way it is. With regard to tracking ICE activities, I'll go back to our discussion Thursday. And I may have said something to this effect in a prior business meeting or after our business meeting. We are not in the business of policing the police. So as a county government, we provide the funding for the sheriff's office law enforcement as well as the jail and all other aspects of county public safety and justice services. Okay. The sheriff law enforcement applies to rural and unincorporated as well as leading other coordinated task forces, countywide task forces. So, but the sheriff does the work of an elected sheriff under following our charter and code, just as we have, are sworn to, but also state law and federal law. So our sheriff's team is busy to the max already with the work they're doing. There is no bandwidth to track federal ICE agents or anyone else. Nor should we be wanting them to deviate their energies towards keeping track of another level of government. We should continue to support them in doing the job that they were doing under the Biden administration and doing under the first Trump administration and doing under the administration before that. So what this emergency order seeks to do is put some of those reserve dollars into action in support of the members of the immigrant and refugee community here in Washington County.
As written, it doesn't include that money being used for rent assistance, doesn't it?
No, and in Commissioner Fai, I really appreciate you bringing all these issues forward. I appreciate your discussion here and from, from my perspective on this, I don't know that we have collectively the best view of, of how to utilize these funds. I do think it is with the CBOs that are closest to the problem, to use terminology you used before, people closest to the problem should solve the problem. And I have a high degree of trust in those organizations to determine how to spend that money for the, the, the folks that they represent. And for me, that, that is the most effective and I have the highest level of comfort that that, that that money will be spent in that fashion.
But I think what I'm trying to, sorry, for a second is to respond to you, to that dialogue, just not to respond, but to have a dialogue. There's multiple ways. So there's legal assistance or legal resource needs. And then there's rental for both residential and commercial as well as water shut offs and all that stuff happening. That needs to happen. So I don't know how do we, and then there, I'll come back to the sheriff part of it too. I think how can we best help the community? There's multiple needs.
They answered that last night and it didn't include a number of the things you're listing. And that's, that's what I was going to interject is I think we should be focused on what they're asking for and what, what we heard was some very specific things, but they did not ask us, nor did they state there was a need to be documenting differently. They've got plans for that. People are actively doing that. They did not ask for the sheriff or any other law enforcement agency.
No, we're talking about the rental. I'll come back to the sheriff part, but the rental assistance.
We should focus on what they've said they need though.
And I thought I heard that businesses are impacted, residents are impacted. They didn't clearly say we need rental assistance because the time ran out at that meeting.
I still think that if we are to assign $200,000, it should go to the groups that can determine the best use, the highest and best use of those funds for this issue as described here. I'm not comfortable parsing out is what I'm seeing. I would be much more comfortable with Centro, with Adelante, with those types of groups to do that work. It's a limited amount of funds. So we really need to get the highest and best use of those funds through, through this process. That's why I don't, I don't know that we, we are, in my opinion, we are not the best source to.
Well, the rental assistance, I feel like that as the housing authority of Washington County, I think we could look into different funds to do that, rather leaving this as it is, but also figuring out how else can we help with the rental assistance?
And that's a different issue than this order then.
But it could, there, I'm pretty sure we can include it in here somewhere. I don't know how we would word it as whereas here, but I think there is a way to maximize the impact that we're because we wear a different multiple hats, like how do we insist on clean water services? The shut offs and to suspend those, like there's, as a county commissioner, as we're wearing multiple hats and I'm trying to facilitate that kind of a conversation of different hats we can tap into to bring that resource.
This is a first step from my perspective and Vice Chair Teresa's outlined the fact, and I agree with her, that we're putting resources in the hands of CBOs that are best suited and closest to the work. And they may come back to us and say, and we should be open to what are the evolving needs? And if this money gets spent well and there's some compelling continued need, I'm willing to consider that. And I don't, I don't think that this is funding that's restricted in how it's being used, other than it must be used to address these concerns, but I, I think we
I'm comfortable with that. I just didn't want to shut the door down.
I think we need to think about this as an iterative process. We do have a lot of programs providing, you know, rental assistance, other things already. On the, on the shut off issues, like it's, I don't, we really shut people off of sewer and stormwater? Like I don't, I don't really, like there's, there's, usually that's controlled through water, which we don't, we don't control. I know that some of the water districts do that, you know, change that during COVID, but do we actually have water?
As we talked about at the October CWS Learning Day, there is a process.
Like where we walk off someone's sewer?
It has to be, it has to be through water.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. Okay.
So
We don't have direct control.
I'll say, so Commissioner Fai has said that she's supportive of this. And I'll say, by stating this as a first step, that this is an iterative process and that you are looking at putting at further risk additional county reserve funds. When we already know we have yet again, another cuts budget with all kinds of liabilities. You've just convinced me I'm going to be voting no on this. And part of my thinking there is this is year one of a four-year presidential administration. I can remain hopeful that Congress will be more effective in the future, but I'm not seeing that today. So I look to the next three years and I see continued difficulty and continued local county government financial strain. And to date, that the three of us have been on the commission since 2019, we have worked with our management to do a lot of foundation building and get this county on, county government on a sustainable path moving forward. And I'm proud of the work we've done to date. I'm respectful of the fact that over 31% of the voters of Washington County supported Donald Trump as president in the November election. And I don't want to disenfranchise them either. So I'm troubled by the discussion that's gone into this emergency order, which is beyond what I thought we gave direction for last Thursday. So I'm just going to leave it there.
I guess I want to clarify my comments about iterative. That's as much or more about other actions that we may take that may not be directly financial. I bear your concerns. I also think that we have to react when conditions and situations change. I don't know what four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks, two years, like what that's going to look like in the future. I do think we have to be
I don't want to make promises that I can't deliver on.
I, I support that as well. I would ask you to, you know, given the importance of this, to consider your support without additional clarity from me, but I understand if you ultimately can't.
I think it will depend upon how this is explained by you folks up on the dais.
Oh. There's a very pinky little thing on the second to last page, Washington County at the top line is called incorrect.
Washington. Okay, we'll clean that up.
Scribners here. Yes. I will be supporting this.
Who will be presenting this?
Did ask that at the beginning and we quickly pivoted away from that. Sorry, Chair. If I'm presenting the SNAP one, who's presenting this? Down to one.
There are four of you.
But two worked off.
Yes, I agree.
Yep.
Is SNAP looking better now?
If we go back and read
Present if you want, Jerry.
So Alex only to have a few minutes.
Absolutely. So Commissioner Willie, you're going to present it?
Yeah.
Okay, so our staff usually needs 10 minutes to set up our business meeting. So if you want, we can pause our work session now in completing items one and two and four. Item three has been pulled and that'll give Commissioner Willie a little time to get prepared. Okay, so we will possibly reconvene here depending upon how things go with the business meeting. We're aiming for 11 o'clock, but as usual, all things flex from there. So stay tuned.